Was that what they were moving, that's all they were moving, that they were moving?
She show you plenty of good stuff?
The what?
Did she show you plenty of good stuff?
She, um, well, I brought her a photo album, some of our historical memorabilia to have. And she was reminiscing.
Oh, yeah. That was bad, that was bad.
Yeah, and I got a lot of that on video, so you guys really need to... Yeah.
How you doing?
Did you tell me Rosita?
That's your name.
Because we were talking about La Pasadita, so...
I know, that's what Corinne called me.
No, I thought you were Rosita. She called you Rosita.
Rosita.
That erupted.
Okay, you're taboo. You don't want to disinfect it.
No.
Yeah, he looked confused.
No.
I don't think so too.
No, we only had like 300 people survey on those tablets, so...
I did provide sanitizer.
They used that after they were done with the touch.
Plus shoes around, actually, yeah, definitely.
Well, a lot of them have some skin things.
And some people drank it. Everybody ran outside in the morning, yeah.
Really, people drink it?
It'll probably, you know, they alcohol cop it. Yeah, it's gross. It's like damn quails. It's like damn quails.
Pretty shady, but I couldn't even do that.
Yeah, it was like President Dan Quaid.
Come on, don't act like you've never done that.
No, I didn't.
Yeah. You can't get it from a horse, you can't get it from a camel, you can't sanitize her. Yeah. What's a good time either? Instead of, here's your kidneys down, let's take it down.
She, she took the bottle away and everything else. Where we go?
So, if they get...
Yeah, it's not good for you. Yeah, rubbing alcohol.
We only talked about the other way.
That's like the word we were using.
Thank you.
We had two minutes.
You forget that's in the trouble.
When he came home, I did, and he, he thought about course.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna say, my head. So, like, I literally swallowed water. No, I just sat in my lap. I was like, oh, come on, man. You have girls, you have girls today. When you natural, after you're drunk, you're like, oh, you hit the water. He's like, don't do that, I'm sure about Ludo. I did that, yeah. And I had Jamie. I die, I'm like, oh, I could die. In a turkey outfit. But then we got... It was, it was hard to know what I thought, but it wasn't, it wasn't... It's in your, I, I, I watched a video, I'm like, oh, I... But the funny thing is, I'm trying to, I'm trying to flash. Oh, Mike swam, and the guy's like, you got this, man, but... I know, I know, you gotta help me. But he didn't help me, he was just like coaching me, like, you got it. No, I'm just, I'm, I'm... No, no. Uh-uh.
Listen, all right, main order, federal call.
Kessler?
Here.
Kanega?
Here.
B. Rorden?
Here.
Ewer?
Here.
Binner?
Here.
J. Rorden?
Here.
Crum?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
In case tonight, we get invited by Pastor Don Meadows of the Christian Capital Sports Square Church.
Dear Holy Father, Lord, I thank you for this community. And Lord, I thank you that you sent your son here to teach us about being good stewards. Lord, I just pray that you be with the mayor, the city council, and the officials here, Lord, and just help us make good decisions today that'll, that'll affect the community that we love. Lord, be with us all today, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pardellations.
Pardellations to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started with our special or business, I do want to recognize Mayor White from Kirby. He's, he's here to make sure that you all do it correctly, so...
Not at all.
With that, then, we'll go to our first item, which is special or business. A, public hearing for paving and drainage improvements in Orchard Acres addition. And I, we do these, we always use a script to do it, so that everyone clearly can speak and present information to the council, so they can make a decision on what needs to be done. So, starting off, I would like to entertain a motion to open the public hearing to paving and drainage improvements for Orchard Acres addition. Mr. Kessler?
Make a motion to be open the public hearing for paving and drainage improvements in Orchard Acres addition.
Second. Got a motion and a second to open the public hearing for the Orchard Acres addition on paving and drainage improvements. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
B. Rorden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
J. Rorden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
We now have the, the public hearing open. Have any council members had any outside contact regarding contacts regarding case? If so, please indicate who you have spoken with and nature of conversation and which, what items of conversation might affect your decision. Counsel, anybody you've talked to?
I, I talked with Linda and Roger at Lowe's. Just basically told them that it was coming up for a hearing. Other than that, didn't have anything else, just kind of informed them that it was coming to council.
Okay. Any other council members? Talked to any of the, anyone else about the addition of Orchard Acres addition? Seeing none, we'll move on in public hearing. Do any members of the council have a conflict of interest in this case? If so, please disqualify yourself from further action on the city council for this case. You may choose to speak as a member of the public. Anyone from the council have a conflict of interest? Seeing none, we'll move on. Has the city received any written or electronic communications on this matter? If so, please read or describe them.
No.
Nothing left? Okay. Now it's time for a member of the public to speak. If you have five minutes, if you are presenting good factual information, this time may be extended by the council vote, please come forward, state your name and address first, so the council will know and for our record. Anyone that would like to be speaking on the Orchard Acres improvement? Come forward, please. Seeing no question from the public end for the council? The public comment is not closed for council action, and the floor is open for council members' comments. Counsel, any comments? Mr. Kessler?
We've had, has the city, cities had meetings with residents in this area before?
We've had two meetings with the residents in here.
How many, about how many residents were at those meetings?
What'd you guess, Will, maybe, and they were, we had both of them at the same time, Orchard Acres and the Dirk. So, I don't know, 50, 75 people, at least.
Roughly close.
Yeah, over there.
Were they all pretty much for the...
The, the straw vote that we took, basically, we, there's no way to really decide. Yes, most of those people were, the majority of them were for the additional improvements over there, yes.
That's for both areas, or...
Well, this is, we're talking about Orchard Acres, we'll get the other one next minute. Other comments, counsel?
I was gonna say, everybody over there was notified about the public hearing and everything, right? We've done, just like we always have before.
Yeah, we had to do our publications, as we did, and did all our publications, and then done.
Okay, thank you.
In that case, and seeing nothing else, counsel, I need a, a motion to, well, excuse me. We did have Mr. Hill, now this is where I'm, where I'm the other one, you guys are here for Orchard Street. Okay. I need a motion to approve, to basically deny the... First, we need to close the public hearing, I think, at this point. We need a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Kessler?
Make a motion we close the public hearing on Orchard Acres addition.
Second.
Have a motion, second, to close the public hearing? Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
B. Rorden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
J. Rorden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Now, we need a motion to either approve or deny the, excuse me, resolution, which basically comes later in our meeting at this point. So, we'll move on into the agenda, because the resolution and passing will come down under ordinance and resolutions at this point. So, we'll move, presentation through a minutes, eight minutes of January 23rd, 2017. Oh, okay. But we're moving pretty fast tonight. We're now going to open the public hearing, as we did before, and read some of the same script to have the Southfield Dirk addition open. Mr. Kessler?
Make a motion to be open the public hearing for paving, drainage improvements in Southfield addition, Dirk Street.
Second.
Make a second, open public hearing on the Southfield addition Dirk Street. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
B. Rorden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
J. Rorden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Public hearing, now open. Have any council members had any outside contact regarding this case? If so, please indicate who you have spoken with, the nature of the conversation that may have affected your decision on this Southfield addition on Dirk Street. Mr. Kessler?
I have talked to the commander post, WFW post 6957. I'm a lifetime member there, and I have talked to them about this issue.
Other discussion? Anyone else, counsel, talked to anyone? Seeing one, and seeing none, we will go to, do any member of council have a conflict of interest in the case? If so, please disqualify yourself from further action on the city council, and you may speak as a member of the public in any law context, counsel? Mr. Kessler?
I don't believe I have a conflict of interest, even though I'm a member there. I'm not a voting officer there.
And you physically don't own part of, you're not getting anything out of a, correct this one, or you correct the case? No, I would say you don't have conflict. Anyone else, Captain? Seeing none, and we'll move on to, has the city received any written or electronic communications on the matter?
None.
None? Now it's time for the members of the public to speak. You have five minutes. If you are presenting good factual information, the council may extend that time of voting. Please state your name and address first. We do have Vance Hill of VFW that would like to speak. Mr. Hill, come forward. Again, you'll need to state your name and address for the record.
Mayor, city council, thank you very much. My name is Vance Hill, I'm the post commander of the Hayesville VFW. It's located at 7507 South Broadway. So, tonight, for the record, we'd like to state that we're opposed to this. Of the 23 lots, the VFW owns five undeveloped lots, which is directly to the west of the VFW post. There's a wide array of reasons that we're opposed to this. We have done quite a bit of research. A, and foremost, I would say it's, puts a very heavy financial burden on our membership. Per lot is $90 a month, roughly. So, we're looking at $450 a month for 15 years, roughly just shy of $85,000, I believe. So, for us, it's a membership-based, nonprofit veterans group. This really places a large financial burden on us. There's several other reasons that we're opposed to it, and from my understanding, part of what brought this to light was the flooding that occurred this past, I'll call it late summer, early spring timeframe. But if you look around there and drive through that neighborhood, you'll see that all the culverts are either clogged or collapsed. The rainfall was, basically, in a three-month period, or a 61-day period, you had 27.49 inches of rain, and the average rainfall would be 6.63 inches. A lot of that's your water table rising. A part of that Dirk Street area is on the flood plain. I think if you put in a culvert and curb and gutter and all that, excuse me, not culvert, but curb and gutter and drainage system, I think if you experience rain like that, I think you may even compound the problem. I don't think you're gonna eliminate the problem. The, the creek or the basin that all that water flows into eventually, which is just west of that Dirk Street, it's gonna flood just the same. But with that said, um... Well, there, there's several other reasons, but primarily, our opposition is the financial burden that it's gonna place on us as a veterans' organization. So, with that, is there anything you need to add? Okay, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak? Again, it's for or against the drainage improvements for Southfield addition Dirk Street? Seeing no one, we'll move on. A public comment from the council itself. The floor is open for the council to make comments. Counsel? Mr. Kanega?
Have we had people from that area approach us about doing this? I guess the same question would apply with the last one, where most of the people present at the meeting from this area in favor of the...
There were several people, I can't tell you whether there was a majority of those people there or not. We did have several people from that area. Previously, there's been a petition carried that it couldn't get enough people to sign petition to get it done at that point. So, there has been interest in there, there's a petition that's previously been carried over there.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Do we have any options as the city to perhaps alleviate a nonprofit that has five lots of, looking at, splitting a 50-50, or only charging them for one or two lots? Do we have any options on that? Because I would see that as, as a large burden on them.
They're part of the, the Memphis district that's been set out at this point, and that's truly what we've already put together as far as Memphis district itself. So, if you take them out of the Memphis district, what happens is you're going to up all of the specials on all of the rest of the people that live in that addition. Because it changes your cost and it spreads your patients. So, instead of having 23 lots over there, you're gonna spread those against a larger, smaller number of lots.
I understand, I didn't know if maybe the city at large could help cover some of those.
We already are covering the portion of this, city at large, is already covering a portion of this. We're covering, we're covering the curb and gutter itself and paying for that out of this. So, the city is paying for the curb and gutter already, city at large.
Okay, thank you.
Other, counsel? Other comments, counsel, that we need a motion to close the public hearing? Mr. Kessler?
Make a motion we close the public hearing?
Second.
Make a second, close the public hearing? Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
B. Rorden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
J. Rorden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, now, move on, presentation through a minutes, eight minutes of January 23rd, 2017. Kessler?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of January 23rd, 2017.
Second.
Make a second, through the minutes, January 23rd, 2017. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
B. Rorden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
J. Rorden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item D, that's a special meeting, January 31st, 2017. Mr. Kessler?
Make a motion we approve the special, the minutes of the special meeting, January 31st, 2017.
Second.
Make a second, through the special meeting minutes, January 31st, 2017. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
B. Rorden?
Yes.
Ewer?
I'm staying.
Binner?
Yes.
J. Rorden?
I'm staying.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Move on into item number one, this is heard, A, Janet Harton, regarding 2017 Hayesville Fall Festival.
Name, Janet Harton, president of Hayesville Fall Festival, 1330 Cockwin Lane. Coming for you tonight to ask for your permission to use Rigs Park, October 20th through the 22nd, for the 3:30 noon Hayesville Fall Festival.
Counsel, what would you like to do with that request? Mr. Nick?
Mr. Mayor, I'm, is that we allow Hayesville Fall Festival, use of Rigs Park, October 20th through 22nd?
Second.
Make a second, to through the Fall Festival, use of the Rigs Park, January 20th through 23rd of October. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
B. Rorden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
J. Rorden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item two, approval of license and bond. We have done, item three, introduction of ordinances and resolutions. Before we get into that, we have a bond, counsel here, that is going to give a presentation on these resolutions, so that you have an idea of what the next procedures would be if you were to pass these resolutions.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Frank Shovell with George K. Baumann Company, financial advisor in the city. Will asked me to come and kind of give an overview of the process. I think you've been through it before, maybe not in a while, but for the special assessment process, the street projects will need to be completed before the specials can be taken place, so we have a final cost. So, we'll use interim financing. At a, if, if the resolution is approved tonight, at a future meeting, you'll adopt another resolution that authorizes the sale of temporary notes to be used as an interim financing. Excuse me. And to approve the temporary notes, that will fund the street projects, and once the street projects are complete, I think roughly six months or however long it takes, we'll determine the final cost, if there's any unexpended note proceeds, and determine how much note interest has accrued at that time. Once we have a final cost, we can determine the sizing of the permanent financing of the bond issue, yeah, the bond issue. And once the, once the final, once the final debt service schedule is completed, and we can determine the spread of the special, there'll be another, I'm sorry, my mind's going a little blank. There'll be another hearing and meeting, the council, and property owners will then have an opportunity to pay in their portion as a lump sum, or actually any part of the specials at that time. Once the 30 days is expired, we'll reduce the sizing of the bond issue by any prepaid portions that were accrued, and we will then issue the final permanent financing of the bond issue, and those remaining property owners will be paid, proceeds will be paid over the 15-year period. That was a pretty quick and dirty lesson there, but I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Questions, your council?
Don't see any...
Mr. Kessler?
With the 30 days or 20 days, residents have two positions to, 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 that, that time very passed.
That's what our publication was, it was when they had the time to protest at that point, so 50% of the land, they own 50% of the land, or 51% of the landowners had the time to protest, and that's already passed, that's why we're...
Wait a second. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor? We've got, if these resolutions are passed tonight, we'll publish them on Thursday, and then a 20-day protest period starts after that publication.
But the other publication that they had protesting, it was already passed at this point?
There wasn't a, there wasn't anything to protest up at this point.
We, we did publish...
We published the notice hearing on two consecutive weeks, and then three days passed after the second publication.
So, in that case, once this resolution, if it is passed, then they will have the timeframe to...
20 days after publication.
To the point of, to either have 51% of the landowners themselves to turn it down, or 50% of the amount of land to turn it down. It was almost taking 20 days, but you admit to 30 days?
When you start out 30 days, that's paying period between temporary and permanent financing, when they get paid, and not to pay the interest for the permanent financing, they're two different timeframes. Yeah, correct. That's after the project's already done, they have 30 days to pay in their portion before they spread the specials, or before the permanent financing.
Anyone here, accepting? Okay. No other questions? We'll move on to the agenda then.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're going to have a hearing, acting of resolutions. A, a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain improvements for the city of Hayesville, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing providing for the making of improvements in accordance with such findings, subject to protest, this is the street improvements for Orchard Acres. Would you like to do it, Mr. Counsel? Kessler?
You may have already asked for this, but, but were there any protests from the residents? Did you receive any protests?
No, from what I understand, there was no indications to us at this point.
I was surprised no one is here to protest it.
Yeah, if you didn't want to, yeah. Mr. Nick?
I'll make a motion, we pass a resolution determining the advisability of making of certain internal improvements for the city of Hayesville, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, subject to protest, which is street improvement for Orchard Acres.
Second.
Make a second, to approve the resolution indicating the internal improvements, as presented to the council, when you are going to pay for the property. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
B. Rorden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
J. Rorden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on then to item D, which is a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain true improvements for the city of Hayesville, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing providing for the making of improvements in accordance with such findings, subject to protest, and this is the improvements on the Dirk Street, which is the Southfield addition. Counsel, would you like to do this? Mr. Kessler?
Is there any written objections, protests to this area, besides what was spoken there?
Not that we received, except for what you've denied. Mr. Ewer?
Will they have the same opportunity, even though they came tonight, to still protest it after the 20 days, maybe before the 20 days is up?
They, they got the right for the petition.
Right, the petition, okay.
Right, the petition, okay.
So, they have, if we have 51%, then the landowners sign a petition, and that has to meet the criteria of what petition is, because it has to be, and I'm going to explain this, and if I'm wrong, please correct. When they say landowners, if you have a husband and wife, both of them have to sign a petition. If you have whatever owners, it's got to be the true owners of the property, whether that's husband, wife, children, it's got to be the true, one cannot sign for the property without the other owner truly signing for it on that petition. This is what killed the petition last time, because there wasn't the correct signing of the petition last time. Mr. Crum?
I'd just like to state, I sympathize with the VFW, with the five properties, this has been an ongoing issue in this addition for many years. These streets are long overdue for being paved and the guttering and stuff like that. And I think it's a great improvement for the city of Hayesville, and as a representative of this ward, I understand, because I've had several calls, not just since the rain, but since the time I've been on council, about when are we going to pave the streets over here? Like I said, I sympathize with the VFW, I think we have a good working floor with the VFW, and I hope it continues in the, in the future, but I think this is something that, for the betterment of the city, we didn't have a big, huge crowd in here tonight protesting and saying, hey, we don't want this. So, like I said, I think for the betterment of the community, I think it's the thing to do.
Mr. Kessler?
Everybody likes improved streets, but when it comes down to money, and we have about 20, 20 percent of the owners of the VFW, I would hate to incur a financial hardship on a veterans organization with their fine blocks over there, our city owners, so, my personal opinion, I'm against it.
We do need a motion on the resolution, unless there's more discussion? Mr. Nick?
I move that we approve a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements for the city of Hayesville, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, subject to protest, street improvements, Dirk Street.
Second.
Motion second to pass the resolution determining the advisability of making certain internal improvements on Dirk Street, which is the Southfield addition, Dr. Hage and Hating, as presented to the council. Further discussion, council? Question?
Kessler?
No.
Canega?
Yes.
B. Rorden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
J. Rorden?
Yes.
Crum?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Resolution passed. And again, say there'll be a publication and a 20-day period for a protest petition to be sent and filed, and if anyone is doing one, please make sure you get all the legalities there, so you don't turn one in, and it doesn't meet the legal form of, you know, I don't know whether you're wanting to carry one and do that signing, but just truly make sure that it meets the legal form, because we'd hate to have it turned in on like the 19th or 20th day, and it didn't meet the legal form. So, be sure, get either counsel or someone to do that for you. That will lead on then to item C, an ordinance annexing and incorporating certain land within the boundaries of the city of Hayesville, Kansas. Mr. Crum?
I have a question. In the future, when we get something that says annexed, will we get a map?
Yeah.
Something that shows, I understand that, I understand you're going to show us something, I would like to see something in the packet. I don't like to get something that says annexation of certain land or whatever, and not being able to take a look at picture, and see what we're going to do. Google map, you can make one, outline it, then we know in the future what we're going to do. I understand, and I appreciate that, but it'd be nice to have it in the bag.
Whether or not it's going to show up, it's a stretch of Meridian, starting at Grand, heading north, and stopping right south of the bridge that goes over the Big Ditch. It's recently been improved, the surface has been milled and resurfaced by the county, and it's a section that they've been in talks with us for a little bit of time, letting us know that they improve it, they would like us to take it into the, take it into the city of Hayesville. You can see where that's at, it's the green in the middle there, like I said, it's on Meridian, heading north from Grand, and stopping before we get to the bridge that covers, that comes over the Big Ditch.
This is the, as everyone knows, I guess, the concrete that the city, or the street that this, the county, excuse me, has just resurfaced, and they're still working on the bridge, we know, this was the land that they came in, the street they came in and did a full resurfacing on it, so we didn't have to have any maintenance on that street for several years. And one reason they wanted to do the maintenance was to get us to go ahead and take it into the city, so it became our responsibility, but they wanted to make sure it was truly up to the quality before they did that at this point. Mr. Crum?
One other question I have, you come off of, come off of Grand on to Meridian, right there it's 35, and then it jumps to 45, will this be 35 all the way to the bridge, or are we going to change the speed limit there, or what do we?
Once, once it truly goes into the city, it does, then it'll be steady limits, correct?
That's correct, and there is, there is part of our ordinance that covers Meridian, but I do not know what that speed is, whether it's 35 or 45.
That was one of the questions that was asked me, was is it going to go from 35 to 45?
I can find out, it's, it's in our, our traffic ordinance book, I don't know what it is. Where we revert to whatever, whatever the ordinance says is what it'll be.
Forty.
Forty. I don't think it's 40 in the book, but I will have to check. Where we revert to whatever the state ordinance says. Okay. Does this include the right-of-way on both sides of Meridian, or is that already?
Road right-of-way. It should, because the road right-of-way is part of the true city parts of it, is that description give us the right of the road right-of-way? Without the right, without the right-of-way on both sides, it's not real good for the improvements, and we need to do something at this point.
I can't answer that before I've got this done.
The, the map seems to me to show only the, the street, but I don't know whether there's a width on that at this point. Well, looking at the state, Mr. Crum, you have a question?
I was just going to ask, are we any kind of deadline or...
We're not sure, no deadline on it at this point, so, county already did what they needed to do, and they already run it through the, the commission at this point, so it's, it comes back, we can act on it whenever we want to. Mr. Nick?
Without making a formal motion at this point, I, I wonder if we're tabling it until we know for sure what we're getting, what'd be the thing to do.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the right-of-way description, I agree, because we want to make sure we truly have the whole thing, the right-of-way of the street itself. Now, motion to table? Mr. Crum?
I make a motion that we table the ordinance annexing and incorporating certain land within the boundaries of the city of Hayesville, Kansas.
Second.
Motion in that, second to table? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
B. Rorden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
J. Rorden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
We'll go to item four, those communications, take over any announcements. Any announcements, everybody would like to make? Mr. Crum?
At the library, on the 20th, they're going to have a movie night, I don't know if it's at 6:00 p.m., I'm not sure what the movie is that night, but on the 24th, at 6:30, there will be a special movie event at the library. It's actually a special presentation that was shown at the state capitol this year on Kansas Day, it's called Home on the Range, the story of America's iconic song. It's supposed to be pretty impressive, follow-up on how the song was developed and different things like that, should be very interesting, that'll be at the library on the 24th at 6:30, and then on the 25th, is their next, at 10:30 in the morning, is their people day, and that's their board games and stuff like that. And then there is book, boogies on Tuesdays at 10:00, and storytimes are on Wednesdays at 10:30, and that's what's going on at the library.
No other announcements, we'll move to item B, the Hayesville Park Board 2016 Annual Report. Mr. Kessler?
As you mentioned, this is the 2016 annual park board report, I just wanted to highlight some, some areas. Park Board did a lot this last year. There's some repairs done in the Pride Park Fountain, including a, some lights have replaced, also computers. Park Board also approved to have a vegetable memorial built there. Off-street parking was installed over by the pool, off Serra Lane, also at Whistler Park. LED sign and scoreboard were installed at Plankton Carpenter Field. Old up disk golf course, there's some launching pads, two sets of pads for each pool there. There's a tree farm that was put in over by Public Works, 300 small trees were planted over there, to be put in parks and be part of the city homeownership program. Seven-Ninth Street Park was renamed to Rangel and Dora Park. Bridge and sidewalk was installed over there, a lot of dirt work was done over there for the north, for soccer fields. And some things we're going to be, Park Board's going to be doing in this year, we're going to be concentrating on Wi-Fi in the parks, getting soccer fields completed, worked on. Whistler Park is going to have small playground, playground equipment, relocating equipment from Rigs Park in the north, both sides to the south side, and also lighting the security cameras, skate park, we worked on. So, that's it. Are you good?
Park Board's been really busy, and I think you can see the improvements in the area of what they've been able to do for us this week. We'll move then on to item C, there's a letter we sent to the USD 261 regarding the naptorial parking lot north of Serra Lane. Item D was a letter from Senator Christian on the Mary's Youth Council trip to Peacock. Item B is a little council regarding the new door to door license. Item M was a thank you card from the parents, his teacher's donation for Mom's meal. Item G is the US courts changing the price in negotiation agreement for certain cable networks. Item vital business we have done, item six of the business, a recommendation from Hayesville planning commission to approve zone change request for certain law school reports, second petition.
Good evening, mayor and council members. On January 26th, we held a public hearing, the planning commission held a public hearing to hear a rezoning case pertaining to change, pertaining to lots 26 through 30 of Block B in the River Forest second edition. In your packet, you received a memorandum, a staff report that was issued to the planning commission, as well as the, as well as the draft minutes of that meeting, and their recommendation for approval of the zone change. I am ready for any questions.
Questions, council? Mr. Kessler?
Know somebody opposed to this at the public meeting?
Yes.
Any other questions, council? Anything that, what would you like to do with the zone change? Mr. Kessler?
Make a motion to me approve the zone change as presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve the zone change on the River Forest lots as presented. Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
B. Rorden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
J. Rorden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item B, the configuration of fiber optics installation and termination.
What kind of a detailed memo in here, I don't know if you have the time to read it, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Questions on the fiber optics? Council? Mr. Kessler?
Per standard, this will help with the telephone system, which I guess we'll be talking about later, on, also on like Wi-Fi around the city.
Yeah, the Public Works has already run the actual conduit, this will be pulling that cable and putting the end on, so it's connected correctly. We want to make sure we had some people that were truly qualified to do this, even though Public Works is hardly qualified, we didn't want to break the cable, they didn't want to break the cable, so. We have got to get that to move liability to somebody else. So, you do have the Decker Electric, it looks like, is the little bit of $13,000 or $20,000, $74,000.
Make a motion to me approve, approve this installation of the fiber with a Decker Electric for $13,000, $74,000 and $0.76.
Second.
Motion second to approve Decker Electric bid for the fiber optics installation and implementation. Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
B. Rorden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
J. Rorden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item C will then move to the consideration of phone system purchase.
Once again, put quite a detailed memo in there, and we can answer any questions you might have on this.
This truly because of the change in the fiber, you can see it, like I said, we'll need to upgrade the phone systems, so, which will do a lot more for us, more, visit the lines, tying all of one in together, the same phone system. I just, I'll go over those kinds of... Mr. Kessler?
So, who'd be doing this, where?
The companies, the Great Plains Communications, I put that on, they're proposing in the packet there, right, the memo?
So, Great Plains is $46,578 is what their bid at this point is?
Yes.
And you see, that's going to be quite a saving, we'll get it back for your timeframe.
Sure. Question, I make a motion that we accept a bid from Great Plains Communication, purchase and installation of the phone system, in amount of $46,578.
Motion second to approve Great Plains bid for $46,578 for the new telephone system. Question? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
B. Rorden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
J. Rorden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item D, consideration of public defender's service agreement. We always get to have someone, be a public defender, if someone cannot pay for their own attorney, the present one we have, as your memo shows, is moving to the attorney general's office, so we need to replace him. The judge made the recommendation for us. Mr. Kessler?
This would be an agreement with Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Quick motion, we approve this agreement, open the city and Kenneth Miller.
Second.
Motion second to approve the public defenders agreement with Kenneth Miller and the city. Question? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
B. Rorden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
J. Rorden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Then move on to, item D, consideration of easement granting access to 140 North Main. As you can see, this easement grants the KDAG the ability to go in and remove the plume of gasoline that's been sitting over in the Bickers Building for years and years and years. plume of gasoline that's been sitting over in the Bickers Building for years and years and years. And it will allow now to be able to have a much more marketable building and one that we don't have any gasoline problem with all these wells we're monitoring over there. Mr. Kessler.
Most of the drawing, there's a proposed trailer location and some wells over there to the, well, the grassy area. How long will that trailer be over there?
They give me timeframe and the timeframe is a pretty large one, between a year and two years. And it depends on how quick the, what they're trying to take out of the ground comes through. He thinks it's gonna be a shorter timeframe or closer to a shorter timeframe because of the sandy soil there. And with the tests that they've been able to do, I think it's gonna come through quicker. But we're trying to get it done and they actually bumped up their timetable. So we'll get it done and out of the way before we do put anything over there for the Mary's Memorial. And that's why they're also starting on the northern section.
Those are my next questions for us. Just mentioned the vegetable memorial, does this put a delay on that?
No, I don't think so because they're going in to get that out immediately. That way we can move forward on the vegetable memorial. And that was one thing that they brought up and they wanted to make sure that they cut it out of their force. Mr. Mayor.
Are any of the wells already on the property?
Yes, there are wells that are already there. And as your package shows them in color, it's like a black and white here. They already had them marked on there as the current ones that they had.
They've had monitoring well over there for certain, ever since that came out of the service station.
Okay. So they're putting a few more.
They're putting more, so they can actually take it out in different locations.
I don't know how, I mean, it's a large sucking and churn process. Probably suck out, I guess, and see if they pull up that gasoline out of that.
All the ones that you see marked on there that are black, those are the existing ones. And then the other ones that are in pink are the proposed, are the blue and are proposed.
Again, this is no cost to us, so we're not having to pay for doing that at this point. So it'll truly improve our building ground and that type of thing. We're really wanting to sell it, which was really one of the reasons we never could sell it in the past at this point. Not sell it, but it actually gets it somewhere, but it's too sound. I'm putting up the market tomorrow. Mr. Kessler.
Make a motion to me approve the granting the easement to 140 North Main.
Second. Most second to grant the easement to 140 North Main. Question. Question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
B. Roden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Diner?
Yes.
J. Roden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item F, consideration of manhole rehab with our special services, special services. We do this annually, thank Bill.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, we have a memo in regards to an agreement with Mayor's Specialty Services to rehab manholes throughout the city, the Voice Water Department. In 2015, Mayor's honored a price freeze in the amount of 125 dollars per vertical foot. This year, I'm asking for approval to do approximately 200 vertical feet for a total amount of 25,000 dollars.
Mr. Kessler.
Quick motion, we approve the, approve this request with Mayor's Specialty worth 25,000 dollars for 200 vertical feet.
Second. Most second to approve the contact with our special services. Question. Question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
B. Roden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Diner?
Yes.
J. Roden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item G, consideration antique style light purchases.
Also, before we deny, I have a memo, a quote from City Electric Supply in regards to purchasing 12 antique lights, pole assemblies with 65 watt LED bulbs. These will be going down Sarah Lane from Hungerford to Clinton. If you're familiar, last year, we had Westar pull the overhead lighting, get everything underground. So it's pretty dark over there right now currently. These LED lamps do have a five-year warranty. We've worked through some previous designs and make this product much better, I think, for us. Asking for approval for 12 pole assemblies and 65 watt LED lamps for a total of 22,623 dollars and 60 cents.
These were budgeted in 16 and we didn't do it in 16, so the funding is still there. Yeah. Mr. Kessler.
Make a motion to me approve this purchase of the LED lamps and poles with City Electric Supply for 22,623 dollars and 60 cents.
Second. Most second to approve the antique lighting as presented. Question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
B. Roden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Diner?
Yes.
J. Roden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item A, consideration change orders from the Activity Center.
Good evening, Mayor and council. We're roughly down to around two and a half months toward completion of the Activity Center. We're getting down to some of the fine details inside, so as you can see, we've came across some change orders. Neither are our requests. I try to detail them as much as I can, try to explain some of them. If not, I'm seeking for approval for 14,534 dollars and 70 cents to approve these.
I think as your memo shows, either one that we've requested or changes to make operate better at this point. Mr. Kessler.
We'll see, current, I was gonna have like two days to the timeframe. What was the current completion, 27th of April?
April 28th now, with these two added days. We're running around 73 days.
I would like to approve any change orders. Mr. Kessler.
Make a motion to me approve these change orders for 14,534 dollars and 70 cents.
Second. Most second to approve change orders as presented. Question. Question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
B. Roden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Diner?
Yes.
J. Roden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Also, with this, I would like to request council's approval for the mayor to approve change orders with accordance with purchasing policy for non-budgeted items. This would allow the mayor to approve change orders less than 10,000 dollars with recommendation from staff. As I said, now that we're getting down to the last 73, 75 days, things are of time, essence of time. We'll need to get them going, get them approved. Anything above 10,000, of course, we would bring back. I'm also asking for that approval too.
Do I want to approve it? Mr. Kessler.
I did not see that in our packet, did you? Get away from me then. We just thought of it like, get it speed.
As you can see, we had several of them come up. Counciling meets every two weeks, there's things that can come up within a week's time period to keep us on a timely manner of getting on time, this project on time. We need to get the approval back to them so they can get it done. Like sheet rockers, diselectricians, for example, they've gotta get something done for the sheet rockers coming in behind them and closing up the wall. So looking for approval for the mayor to approve. Authorization for council to approve, mayor and staff authorization to approve change orders as per the purchasing policy for non-budgeted items. I probably messed that up. Non-budgeted items.
I would say I make a motion to do what George just said. Go ahead and okay things under 10,000 dollars.
Most second to approve the ability of Mayor's change orders below 10,000 dollars. Question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
B. Roden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Diner?
Yes.
J. Roden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Moving on. Can you all just shut up there? I can start agreeing with you, USD 261 Campus Baseball.
Yep, this is our annual agreement with the districts for use of Plagans Carpenter Field for the baseball and softball team. Games. Most of the changes in here are just dates. I know that when it got sent back to the school, they're not highlighted in red, so I apologize for that. I don't think there's anything besides dates in this that has changed, so just seeking approval for the mayor's assignments.
Crum. I make a motion of a new mayor's assignment agreement with USD 261 for use of Plagans Carpenter.
Second. Most second to assign to, I approve the agreement with Campus Baseball, this is USD 261. Question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
B. Roden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Diner?
Yes.
J. Roden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
J., consideration agreement with Hazel Bank Aviators.
Same thing here, mostly dates.
The changes in the agreement from last year.
There's a couple of edits to all things, just approval for them to use the LED sign that we added out of Plagans Carpenter. And they also did request to sell additional product besides Coca-Cola. And they can do that as long as they don't use the coolers in concession areas. That was it.
Mr. Kessler.
I do have a question. The term goes from May 25th, 2017 through August 18th, 2017. Down on paragraph eight, talks about talk about waiving charges for June through August, should just be changed May through August. You make them pay earlier.
It should be changed, I will find that in here, we can get that.
I should break, paragraph three.
Yeah, it should be for the whole timeframe, so we can get that changed. So with that correction, we can approve it.
Which part?
It should be May through August and August.
Mr. Kessler.
Make a motion to me approve the agreement with the Hazel Aviators with the, with the changes discussed.
Second. Most second to approve the Hazel Aviator agreement as made. Question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
B. Roden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Diner?
Yes.
J. Roden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. You wanna, you wanna just give your report? Or you wanna sit down a little longer?
I can.
Just, just here and there. Move on to talking about Dave and Dave's, as well. J., the clerk.
Good evening, Mayor and council. City offices will be closed on Monday, the 20th, President's Day, as well as Public Works Office. There will be staff on duty though. In case there is an emergency, they can call the Hazel Police Dispatch at 529-5912.
Item C, Public Works Chief. See, he's chief.
Not police. I don't need more on my plate. Good evening, Mayor and council. Just want to let you know that our visiting officer this evening is Officer Justin Jacks. He's a master police officer of the department and he's currently assigned to Campus High School as the school resource officer there. So, and he also does a lot of community events for us and he was one of them that jumped in the lake over at Brakes Park every weekend, so. Say hi to him when you go out there, I think he's thawed out now. In addition, I did look up the answer to the question that we had on Meridian, the speed limit. The portion of Meridian that we currently have is 35 miles an hour. That would be extended out to the new boundaries. However, we will have to have an ordinance change to include that new portion of the roadway that is not currently in the ordinance. Because the way our ordinance is written, it has a legal description of the location that the current speed limit goes to, so we would just have to extend that out. So when that comes back to council, we'll bring back the modification of the ordinance.
Most second.
Correct.
Thank you. Peter, great.
It's a good state. Friday, Thursday, Friday and Monday, there is no school, so we have SOS days going on at Activity Center for children in fifth grade. Saturday, we were having an archery clinic, it's for fourth graders through adults, so you still can't sign up for that if anyone is interested. We were also having a membership drive on Saturday, so it will be free admission from 8 to 1 P.M. We'll have well beats demonstrations, that's our fitness classes. There'll be some drawings and other free offerings going on, so anyone who's interested in a membership, they can come in and check it out for free on Saturday. That's all I have.
Thank you. I made appointments, a Acting Public Works Director. I'd like to make the appointment for Tony Martin to be Acting Public Works Director.
I make a motion that we have to appoint Acting Public Works Director, Works Director, Tony.
Second. Most second. After motion, I can, I can. Question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
B. Roden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Diner?
Yes.
J. Roden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item I, this is where we have any citizens that have not previously been on the agenda, would like to speak to the council. Please come forward and take your name, address, and let the council know what you want to hear. Seeing no one rushing to the podium, we will move on. Item N, exact due session, we have none. Item 11, bills to be paid, any bills to be paid for the first half of February.
Okay. There was a mix-up on the bills to be paid for the first half of February. Reports from the previous council meetings were added instead of the current bills to be paid. I did get a packet with a memo on your council bench for you to look at the bills to be paid, but do ask that you approve us maximum you can get them paid.
Is there?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and pay the first half of February bills for the packet we're given.
Second. Most second to the first half of February bills? Question. Question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
B. Roden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Diner?
Yes.
J. Roden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
I welcome the decision, do we have nothing? Item 13, council, I do say, council attorney. Council. Mr. Kessler.
I had one thing, I've had several requests. I've just been busy and haven't had a chance to get on mine. Several requests, since they put the light in at 7:09 restricting or whatever, engine brake, 18-wheeler engine brakes, whatever, right?
Jake, Jake brakes.
Brake, engine brake, whatever. Apparently, a lot of the houses in Southbrook and places like that, the semi's coming through now, slowing down for the stoplight and stuff, or I know I wouldn't want to listen to it, it's not that good. And I'll try to write it up whenever I get the time, I've just not had time yet, but that was one of the things that was brought to it.
Specifically look into jurisdiction and what it requires.
And I know we
This is a state highway.
We had placed requests with KDOT to place no exhaust brake signs out there on the roadway and last I knew that request had not been granted. That was in the works, I don't know where we're at in the process and we'll follow up. We'll have to check on it and see. We'll follow up to get.
Mr. Kessler.
Talking about that speed limit on Meridian, I wonder if we're gonna have to change part of that speed limit. It's 40 north of the Big Ditch, it's 40 as soon as you cross Grand. Why could we not make the whole thing 40?
If we just take a change to the city code? We're gonna change it, we're gonna change it anyway.
But we're gonna have to change it anyway, that's my point. Why could we not go, why do we have to make the whole thing 35? Why could we not make the whole thing 40?
I guess another reason would be, one, the, on the other side of the bridge is 40, I guess, which is county. I don't know what county ordinances is, are, but yeah, making it more, probably is making more sense.
If that could be done, I would be in favor of doing that. It doesn't make much sense to me. If it stayed 35 on down to the south city limits or something, it would make sense. But right as soon as you cross Grand, you're back up to 40, so.
Well, I see, are there ordinances of what, how that's stated in other areas along Grand, it's what hopefully. Yeah, you can look at that. Other concerns, council?
Yeah.
Item N to go to item D, action, council act request updates. Rose?
Yes, I am currently working with coenforcement on the citation process for seventy-four twenty-six and seventy-four seventy South Broadway. Seventy-four seventy-four has, if you take a drive down there, you'll notice that they cleaned up the front portion of the property. It looks really terrific. We are currently working with them on the back portion of the property. He's done quite a bit of work, so until he does stop working, we'll continue to work with him if you all agree with that.
Any questions, council? Item N, I have four candidates.
Mayor council, make motion to me.
Most second to adjourn? Question? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
B. Rorden?
Yes.
E. Rorden?
Yes.
J. Rorden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor White, we thank you for coming tonight.
Nice shot, everybody. Nice to meet you.